I got my own desk here. I pushed Ron over.
Yeah, you're taking the whole table.
I got the whole thing by myself.
Seniority man, what are you gonna do?
An entire section. Mine's not even, mine's not even.
Look, you have the whole table.
We don't. Are you evangelizing through my...
Yeah.
I want to call the order, uh, meeting of North Branford Town Council on January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty at seven ten P.M. Uh, we'll start the meeting with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call, please.
Mayor Big Leon.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Here.
Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Duty.
Here.
Counselor Fornin.
Here.
Counselor Gold.
Here.
Counselor Paternoster.
Here.
Counselor Felicia.
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that.
I'll second with one correction on page two under committee reports. I, Finance Committee, it should be planning for the fire department retirement plan. Oh, wait, just wait, there's another one on page five. Under B, appointments of Jennifer Ash, there's no names as to who made the motions, first or second. And then, on the motion right above that, instead of abstain Counselor Paternoster, it should be absent. Cause he wasn't here. All the other ones that say absent, so that one, instead of abstain, should be absent. So I'm not sure if we can vote on these with the missing names in that motion. There's, there's no motion as to the first or second.
How's that work, then?
Table it. I'll make a motion to table it.
We'll have to listen to the tapes. We have backup to minutes.
And I'll withdraw, my second.
Okay. Motion was made by Counselor Duty, did you?
Yep.
And seconded, and seconded by you rose?
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni. Role call, please.
Mayor Big Leon.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Fornin.
Yes.
Counselor Gold.
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster. And Counselor Felicia.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move Agenda Item Five A. Christine Cohen and Vinnie Candelora's presentation up to the beginning of the meeting to happen right now after, before we get into the regular council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, motion was made by Counselor Angeloni. And seconded by Counsel Fornin. Okay. Role call.
Mayor Big Leon.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Duty.
Yes.
Counselor Fornin.
Yes.
Counselor Gold.
Yes.
Counselor Paternoster.
Yes.
Counselor Felicia.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you guys for showing up.
Thanks for having us. Glad to be here, I know that it's been, it hasn't worked out that I've been here in the past, I know Vinnie's been, been able to make it, and I'm just glad to be here. We were gonna talk a little bit about what had, I know Vinnie gave you an update on last session. You have likely heard by now that we were successful in getting the reimbursement on the body worn cameras, which was really exciting. We worked together on that and, um, just should have happened in the first place, and regretfully it didn't, so we had to enact some legislation to make sure that we got it done for the, the police and for the taxpayers of North Branford. What else? Oh, ECS, we were gonna talk a little bit about, you go ahead.
Yeah, just, um, we did update the Board of Education last month on the ECS formula, and, and we had given you documents last year, but the formula is being, uh, it was redone because of a court case, and it's being phased in over ten years, so, um, it's now a true formula based on English language learners. The population, um, takes into consideration income level, free and reduced lunch. So the bottom line is that, that North Branford will see a reduction in ECS over the course of ten years. And, and what I have said and suggested is to look at trying to share services. If, if there are areas that we could find savings over the next ten years to start that process. And so we just made that recommendation to the Board of Ed. We just put that out to you, if you want, you know, additional numbers or information, we're happy to provide that for you.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any questions, I know we're always trying to speak with, I know I have six towns within the district, I'm always reaching out to find out if there are things presented to you that seem to be, um, you know, rising costs that really impacting your budgets. I know, uh, waste has been on everybody's mind in particular, because tipping fees are, are sort of going through the roof right now, so that's something that I've been focused on a lot, uh, up in Hartford, especially as the Senate Chair of the Environment Committee, but if there's anything else, I just would encourage you to reach out, but if you have any questions right now, certainly, I know we're both available to take them. I have a question about the ECS grant, the paperwork that I looked at looked like North Branford would probably lose over a million within the next ten years, does that, does that seem accurate?
Yes, so it's roughly, you know, probably a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand per year, it's, it's around close to a million dollars over ten years. Now that could change if our population goes up, the grant money does go up, but the current projection is it would be about a million dollars over ten years.
What about the, um, school construction grants, do you see anything changing with that?
We, we really don't, um, the school construction grants have really dropped down, we used to average about four hundred million per year in bonding, I think this year it was around two hundred and fifty million of actual projects. We still allot four hundred million, so the money is available for school construction, I don't think it'll be changed, although there is, you know, they're, they're changing administratively how it's being done, so it's being moved out of Department of Administrative Services to the Office of Policy Management. I'm not sure it's gonna end up ultimately staying there, but, but that you'll hear about probably this session.
Because I noticed from what I see in the paper, like with Hampden, they had a problem, it seems like that the state is getting a little more strict about whether or not they're gonna allow you to renovate versus new, and whether if you're, if you're not on time, they're gonna deny, that kind of thing, they're much, a little...
So I, I think it's always easier, um, for new construction versus renovating, and there, there are battles that go on. Many times, we put in notwithstanding language, so that's something that happened at the, the North Branford roof there when we did it, the paperwork wasn't done right, we had to go in and do notwithstanding language to fix the error so that the town could be reimbursed. It's pretty common in the process that that happens, um, so we just need to, you know, a dialogue as we go, um, if there are reimbursement issues, but, you know, ultimately, we try to work those things out. The other piece with some of the other schools is, like magnet schools complicate things, so we don't have that issue, um, so I'm not sure what Hampden's issues were, but, um, if they're trying to do a magnet school, that impacts the reimbursement rates too.
And there are different rates by town, so you can, that's public information, we can pull that information and find out right now, you know, the rates that North Branford would be eligible for, and they're, you know, they sort of run the gamut based on a number of factors, just sort of like, an ECS formula is done, there's a, um, funding formula for, uh, restoration as well as completely new construction, and those numbers may vary there, as low, I think, as twelve percent and as high as seventy percent, something, something in that range, so, depending on what town you're in. I have another question after that, oh, that'll be my last one.
Go ahead.
Do you see anything else happening with regionalization?
I stole my thunder.
Should've taken that moment, right?
I don't see too much this session on regionalization, I think there's so many other big topics that'll be taken up, but, right now, the enabling laws have been put into place to allow for towns and schools to do almost anything they can do, um, to the extent that there is discussion on regionalization. I, I know regional school districts have been an issue, we might see some tweaking that is going on there, but overall, the enabling legislation's in place. What we're gonna look at as well, and get back to the town on, is to what extent the state is offering, um, grant incentives to regionalization, I know for equipment, it's available, um, is it available for shared buildings or services, uh, and things of that nature, so we're gonna get some information to you all on that.
I mean, I think all of that came from a place of wanting to eliminate educational inequities, um, but, yeah, I think it shocked all of us, except for the, the couple of people who proposed it last session, um, and, uh, we did all we could to make sure that that was held at bay and that we figure out different ways in, in order to address those inequities across the state.
Senator Cohen, since this is your expertise, where is recycling going?
It's, um, on my mind every moment of every day, and, um, just actually left Hartford, you know, in further discussions about it. We know that we have a problem, and we know, um, single stream recycling has really contributed to the issue, uh, we have a waste problem across the board, so we're looking at ways, um, to divert waste, um, taking food waste per, perhaps, isn't, is an avenue to divert some of the waste and some of the weight out of the, uh, waste stream. Um, it's also tends to be less expensive to haul food waste, um, the unfortunate part is that we only have one anaerobic digester in the state in Southington, um, so it does become more costly when you're talking about hauling to there, so we're, we're balancing that out and figuring out what needs to happen, um, in terms of food waste. And recycling, we know that glass is very, very heavy, um, and, um, plays a large part in, in the tipping fees that we're all experiencing, that municipalities are bearing the brunt, uh, and the cost of, and ultimately the taxpayers are, so we're looking at revisiting a bottle bill, um, you know, this coming session, I know, uh, cost and CCM have both come out in favor of seeing such legislation move forward. I think the question right now is, um, what that looks like, what this newest iteration of a bottle bill looks like, and how we can best work, uh, with, uh, all the stakeholders involved to, you know, get that across the...
Plastics, do they have any, they're where plastics are going?
Well, again, I mean, if you have clean plastics and you're redeeming them, um, and you're able to, then you have a saleable recyclable material, it's when those items are all getting placed in the single stream bin that suddenly our recyclables are no longer saleable, and so a lot of the things that we're placing in our single stream recycling bin are actually ending up in a landfill. So customers don't realize that, they think they're doing the right thing by throwing everything in that blue bin, um, and, you know, meanwhile municipalities are paying up the wazoo in these, um, these haulers fees, so, um, you know, there, there is a market for these products, but it's a market when they're separated in a multi-stream system. So we'll be looking at them.
The towns have to really think about going back a few steps.
I think that's, that's ultimately what we need to do as a state on the whole, but it, it requires a lot of education and, um, you know, process, so.
Thank you. Where do you see marijuana?
Between we just talked about.
Yeah. You know, I continue to oppose legalization, and, um, I, I think what we're seeing right now is the governor's office is resurrecting the bill that we had last year, there were three bills that were in three different committees, none of them had a vote in either chamber, the governor's combining it into one big omnibus bill, um, which I don't think is gonna have support, I, I know in the House it was far short of passing. There are some legislators that wanna see a constitutional amendment to have it go to the voters, um, and I thought that might have been a more viable discussion that could occur, but, so now we have the governor's office in one direction, proponents in the legislature going in another direction, so I, I'm not sure we're gonna see anything on that issue this year. CCM, though, had a great PowerPoint presentation, um, I'm gonna try to get a hold of it, but talked about the municipal impacts to marijuana, they had people coming in from Colorado, um, from different towns, and basically said, we thought we were prepared, we weren't, and talked about all the impacts to the municipalities, and how much cost it imposes, imposed on them, um, which I think, you know, we should try to get a hold of it for you all, because, um, I think that legislation will be one of the most impactful to every town in the state if we do see legalization go through.
Yeah, and I, I'll just, um, also respond to that because I, I do know that my leadership within the Senate Democratic Caucus came out today and was talking about, um, in a very favorable way, uh, passing a marijuana bill. I have not, um, come out strongly in favor of it, I'm probably the minority within my caucus, um, I also haven't completely said that I'm opposed to it, I, the reason for that, I have a lot of concerns around marijuana legalization, I have concerns for towns, uh, and what that looks like for municipalities, we've, we have case studies across the country where it's been legalized and it's not working out so well. I have concerns for, um, legalizing a drug that we know, um, you know, would be under the age at which a, a child's brain is fully developed, and so, um, we know that, uh, up until the age of twenty-six, they're still developing, and there's a lot of issues, uh, with legalizing marijuana, I think we're sort of giving people the green light. By the same token, and this is what we were just talking about, there are a lot of studies that say that it could, could curtail the opioid epidemic that we're faced with, and so I absolutely favor expansion for medicinal uses, um, and I would like to see more of that.
Does the state have a standard way of measuring, um, the success of, um, education systems by town? No, I mean, just, it's just test scores.
And there's, there's also, well, there's a state accountability index, which, uh, you know, I'm sure from the Board of Ed you've heard, takes a number of things into account, and this is sort of putting my Board of Ed hat back on from when I was in, on the Board of Ed in, in Guilford, um, so it's not just test scores, it's graduation rates, uh, the breadth of studies that are offered, um, in a district, um, so they do the best they can, um, at, you know, trying to get a holistic view of what's going on within a district, um, but I think, I, I would probably say they're inadequate, um, because there's so many things that need to be taken into account and can possibly be done in a purely objective manner. All right, thank you.
Anything else, thank you very much. Thanks. Okay. Uh, with that, we'll move into the, uh, regular town council meeting, reports of committees and boards and commissions. First, Economic Development Commission.
Well, this morning was the, um, um, EDC had sponsored the State of the Town breakfast, which was held here in council chambers, and this was the fourth year that they have done it, um, and I just wanna shout out to Roger Salloway for the great job that he did in coordinating with the EDC, this was probably one of the fullest breakfast, um, meetings that I saw today, um, and it was a wide variety of people, and it wasn't comprised of a lot of department heads from, um, town hall. So it was a very well-attended, um, meeting, David, David Lehman, the Commissioner of DECD, um, was our guest speaker, in addition to Mike Paulus giving, um, his viewpoint on the town, just updating everyone. A few things that I took out of it, um, I was in attendance along with the mayor, um, is, and they also livestreamed it, so they did video, the TV, Totaka TV was here, and they had a number of reporters also, that there will probably be articles, um, the patch was here, the New Heavens Register, and there was one other person, um, taking notes, um, but, they, one of the people in attendance, who is a commercial real estate person, um, it was very nice to hear that he said North Branford is actually one of the better towns on the shoreline to actually do business with, as, from a business standpoint, in planning and zoning, the building department, various departments, working with various departments, um, he complimented us, the town, on, um, how well we do with that, so I thought that was a very positive, um, note to, to hear. And David also talked about the state and progress that has been made, um, it's slow, but it's in a positive direction, so even though we hear a lot of doom and gloom about Connecticut, there are some positive things that are happening, it will take time, um, but it's headed in the right direction. So I thought it was a, um, very good breakfast this morning, and, um, little meeting that they had for EDC. That's all.
Okay. Uh, next is Parks and, Park and Recreation.
Uh, they meet next Tuesday.
Uh, next is Police Commission.
Police Commission met on Monday, January thirteenth, uh, one of the first orders of business was a swearing-in of Lieutenant Speary. The chief also shared the results of the community survey that was done on the police department, and it was certainly a very positive report. The Board of Police Commissioners has appointed Mike Standish to the full-time position of dispatcher, if you remember that, it's had to come make it. It was an open house on Saturday, I did not attend, but I talked to the folks that did, and there were a fair number of people that went to see the facility, and the chief is, uh, in the process of developing a video, um, so he can put that online for people that really cannot make the time or the opportunity to, um, go see the place, the facility. As Senator Cohen mentioned, the, um, police department received fifty-four thousand dollar reimbursement for those body card cameras. The next meeting is February tenth.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I have, uh, kind of a second part to it, I'd like to kind of, uh, bring up, I kinda have a lot to say, um, about what I heard, and I had something to say at the end, the police chief gave me a chance to respond, so I hope you don't mind me taking up a couple of minutes of, um, what I saw when I was there. I was lucky enough to see the promotion of Lieutenant Spears. I'd like to report... They brought up the new police station, and mentioned how it'd be across the street, and then the chairman, the police chief, and the fire chief, basically, uh, went into a detailed explanation on how the, uh, radio system basically doesn't work in twenty-five to thirty percent of the town, and some of the police officers and firemen do not have radios that work at times, and how they cannot communicate with other towns with our radio system. And they went into, you know, a deep explanation, because I guess, cause I'm a new member in the council, they basically locked eyes on me, and were letting me know that because of the condition of our radio system, if something was to happen, because of the radio system, that the council and the town would be liable because of us knowing how bad the radio system is. Now, to, this was news to me, I've heard things about how, you know, we need a new radio system, we have an antiquated system, but it kinda caught me off guard, and like I said, they were telling, you know, looking straight at me and, you know, kinda letting me know that, you know, something, it was almost like they were, I would say, almost pleading to me how bad this was. So, I'm kinda getting off subject here, but I, I spoke up, and if you don't mind me reading, I would like to, uh, read exactly what I did say, as far as I can remember, because they have the minute, the minutes are online, but the minutes are very, don't contain everything that was said. I spoke out and said how I was a new council member, and said that, so said to the chief, do you remember when I took the tour of the police station a few weeks ago, how I told you I was physically and emotionally upset on what I saw at the police station? As a citizen and a council member, I was ashamed and embarrassed, and said I am, and I, excuse me if I start getting loud, but that's how I got at this meeting too, I was feeling the same way, and I said, how is this possible that we have twenty-five to thirty percent of our town does not have communication at times? How is it possible that we have some police officers and firemen with no working radios at times? And it's been like this for at least five to ten years. I spoke up and said, this is insane. This can't wait for a new police station, it can't wait a year, it can't wait a month, it can't wait a week, this has to be fixed tomorrow. How is this possible with all the people involved in this town over all this many years? They said they would put together a team between the police department and the fire department and come up with answers. That's my report on what, what happened and what I said, and if you don't mind, I'd like to take this time to put in how I feel. We have a great police force and a great fire department, we, we need a new, we need a new police station that meets the needs and requirements of our police force, but before we do anything in town, I mean anything, build a new police station, build a town hall, build a town center, grouting bricks, splash pads, tennis courts, athletic fields, holiday decorations, new jobs, new cars, new trucks, Potato Fest, school, we need to repair and get a whole new radio system. Now, before anything, safety for our citizens and police department and fire department should be our top priority, and it's definitely mine. What would happen if our school had an emergency tomorrow and the radios didn't work, and we knew about it? Don't come in front of me and ask me to vote in, for any spending on any of the ti, any of the spending on any of the town's money until the radio communication problem is solved. Let's act like the radio system burned to the ground today and get it fixed tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I have a question, uh, Marie, uh, the open house Saturday was a kind of a crummy day, it turned out to be a crummy day.
There were...
Was it crowded, was...
I, I talked to those...
I heard fifty to seventy-five, cause I went through and...
Yeah, I was there for a while.
That's pretty good.
And, uh, they said they, they, they told me prior to me getting there that they had a constant flow of people, while I was there, there was a constant flow of people, um, and everybody, the general consensus, cause I was talking to citizens after they went through, the general consensus was that they couldn't believe the, you know, the, the condition of the police...
I mean, I think...
I was about two, and they said, there was about fifty to seventy-five, that came through, and exactly what Ron said, everybody that went through, my group, nobody left that building feeling that something, you know, can't be done, we need to do something, every, everybody.
One citizen, sorry, one citizen of, she actually said, uh, that she, she came into it, having driven by it all the time, and how nice it looks from the road, and, uh, she came into it with the predisposed notion that, you know, we don't need a new police department because, you know, it's fine, and after the walkthrough, she, uh, she felt that, you know, her, her mind was changed, and we definitely needed to do something, so.
I think that's the problem, people drive by and it looks fine, I, when I first moved to town, I drove by and thought it looked fine, you have to go inside. But he's all, the chief is also, as I said before, I'm gonna put a video online, which I think will help too, for people that can't make it to go, to go on a tour. And I, you know, and going along with Walter's, uh, saying, the best way to, to take care of the communication system is combine it with the new facility, cause it's, a new communication system's gonna probably cost at least a million dollars, and, you know, maybe we can look at bonding it with a new police station, to me, is, might be the way to go.
If I can, if I can just chime in on that for a second too, um, I totally hear what you're saying, uh, Wal, and I, I agree, um, but I also agree with, with what Marie is saying, only because of the cost. In the, I know you haven't asked me yet about the fire commissioners meeting, within the fire commissioners meeting, they finally started throwing around some numbers, the radio's gonna be about five thousand dollars, uh, yeah, about five grand apiece, the fire department has about a hundred...
yeah, about five grand apiece. The fire department has about a hundred of them. The police department has about twenty-five. Um, so we would need to purchase all those. Where our antenna is now, uh, we would need to update that and replace it with a new antenna so that we could actually, because there's, it's the new system that they're looking at through the state, uh, the coverage on that isn't a hundred percent either, um, through the testing that they did. Just to put in that tower, that antenna, is going to be about one point two million there as well. So you're talking well up over two million dollars. So although I agree with your passion, I feel the same way. I think if we went through the bonding process, especially with the way the rates are now and stuff, and we, we put it in with that, plus when you build a new police department, you're going to have to up, update the, uh, the nine-one-one center and, and everything else. If we don't combine that with another police department, um, it just seems like it might be a little easier to digest than to try to make it its own idol. But that's, that's my opinion.
Well, police station hasn't been approved yet, and it's not going to be built for a couple of years. There ain't no way that it's going to happen that fast.
I agree.
So basically, we're saying, "Well, we'll go another couple of years and keep the same, you know, same thing." So if it's, the radio system is as bad as they're saying.
If somebody had some suggestions, they're hoping to hear them.
And if there's, if there's, uh, you know, I think five percent would be a lot. They're saying, even at the ice rink, that there's times that they can't communicate. Like I said, if something happens at the school and somebody's calling for help and, and something happens, well, well, we, we're going to wait till we get the police station, Bill.
But you know, what you said is true. The fire, if you remember at that meeting, the fire chief had two firemen in the police, in the ice rink, uh, on a Sunday before that meeting, and he couldn't communicate with either one of them. All I could hear was static. That's scary.
Right. So here, they can't communicate. So we have a radio system that's not working right now. So we're going to wait. We're just going to wait. We'll wait.
I, I don't...
To me, um, you know, I don't, I don't, in other words, I, you know, like I said, what happens if we had an earthquake and the, and the radio system got absor, got sucked down tomorrow? Would we say, "Well, we're going to wait a couple of years for the new police station. We'll have no radio"? How do we, you know, even if we have to throw, uh, you know, I'm shooting out numbers. I mean, it's like the top priority. How do we, how do we spend money on anything besides that? On anything? We shouldn't spend a dollar until that's taken care, how, how do we, to me, it makes no sense. I mean, that's our top priority, our police officers and firemen being able to communicate. Somebody's house is burning and something happens.
Inside the house and you can't...
Yeah, it's, uh, to me, I, I don't, nothing, nothing else in this town matters besides that.
I know, I know how bad that can be. I've been in situations like that. And Mike, you probably have too. Uh, you, you just can't, you just can't, you are, you can't talk to anyone and, and you're stuck, uh, you're stuck, you're all alone out there. It's an awful feeling.
Yeah, but like, like Marie said, you, you can't, to correct the situation, you can't correct it partway, you know, by...
Right.
...upgrading your radio system, and then you're building a whole new building, and then you've got to move your communications and your radio system in there, you know, and, and a tower and, you know, everything else. It's just, I don't know. It's just, you have to Band-Aid it for another year or two to, to, to get a building up and a tower up that's visible and microwave it. There's a lot of new options coming in. You have to cut, have to cut, have someone come in and design a system that's going to work.
And it has to include public works.
And I mean, we've been, we've been piecemealing it for thirty years, you know. So, they thought the SIMICAS system was the best thing since sliced bread ten years ago, you know, so, and there's still flaws in it. And, and we've been upgrading the SIMICAS system, you know, over the years. So it's...
Well, we have a hundred thousand dollars, and I was just going to, what is that under communication for the fire department, SIMICAS transmitter site, a hundred thousand dollars in the current year's budget? So what would that do?
That's the fourth thing, right Anthony?
The original intent was to put it on the tower at Candelora's sports place to cover that's the gully and the East Haven line.
To improve communication, to, to, to improve radio contact?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
But that won't, that, that won't help with the [inaudible].
Right. So the second, the, the part B is, is a hundred thousand, even a good number. And if our ultimate goal is to replace the system in total, was putting good money after that. I understand, if, if, to them, I had to speak this morning, I had bad communications. But I know it's, it's a hundred percent legit. Um, the third part C was, if we take that hundred thousand and go back to what Mike just mentioned, hire somebody to come in and do a global look at all three aspects, police, fire, and public works, and maybe make a game plan that's going to give us direction. So there's a lot of balls up in here with that.
So nothing's been done with that?
No.
In this budget year?
There's a meeting that Walter mentioned, a meeting that is coming Tuesday of the police chief, fire chiefs, uh, police commissioner, fire commission, trying to come up with a game plan. This time is ticking for [inaudible] as well.
Did I hear someone mention that the, the, the new state system also has some deficiencies?
That's the point that Walter mentioned too, right. They, in, there was some testing done in our town, and there's some deficiencies in the state system. Yes, so we would need to put a tower, and Ochakowsky's had to tune about one point, I think, or...
One point two.
One point two million dollars. And that would enhance the town as well as surrounding towns. And that was one of the, the thoughts the fire commission had. Why are we bearing the entire cost if it's going to help surrounding towns as well? That's not how the state looks at it. So in addition to the one point two million you have to pay for the tower, replacing all your mobiles or your portable, so it's, it's, it's a real number when all this is done. That's what the [inaudible] behind as well, making a game plan.
Yeah, it's, I mean, nobody knows exact numbers, but, I mean, you're talking probably two and a half million dollars when it's said and done, because public works needs radios, the police cars need radios, the fire trucks need radios. It's not just the portables too. Um, but it's...
No, I don't know, Ron, if it came up at the fire commission meeting, but the other thing the police chief said, maybe you can help too, is, do you have to buy all these batteries for old radios? Or is that, is that something that has to be done now, or?
Well, that was discussed at the fire commission meeting as well. Typically, a life span, you can keep reciting the batteries until they don't charge anymore, and then that'd be the same situation. You have ten batteries and you're much good. Uh, and the fire department radios, the ninety or so portable that we have are at that point now. So that's one of the questions the fire chief had, is, you know, does he go out and replace these batteries to solve the problem? Going back to Walter's comment, you're talking probably two years away from what's happened. So you almost have to spend that money today.
Okay.
Keep your batteries. And it's not, they're not secret. Like I'm talking, again, you know, a hundred twenty-five hundred dollars a battery, ten hundred batteries. It's, you know, it's not, not penny. But again, we, we have, we have a game plan. There's so many things in town. We have no game plan. We fly by the seat of our pants on everything we do in this town. We don't have, we don't have a focus, no game plan. We need to get a game plan. And whether that costs us some money to hire somebody to make a game plan for us, that's what this committee's going to talk about Tuesday night.
Mr. Mayor, just something, uh, of course, I've dealt with this issue in other communities that I represent, and something to keep in mind, I think the best approach is to have a system designed that accommodates all of your public safety needs. Uh, and then, uh, determine, uh, reach out to the carriers, AT&T, T-Mobile, Verizon, because what the, if there is a need for coverage, uh, by any of the three major carriers, that they will come in and construct the tower at their cost, no cost to the municipality. The reasoning behind that is if there is a municipal need for public safety, they avoid the, uh, sighting council process. So the process for them to get that tower approved is, uh, truncated and very inexpensive. So they come in, they build the tower, they give the municipality the, the highest spot for the antenna, and they will also contribute towards your radio system expenses. Uh, and, uh, it's a way of offsetting, uh, your costs because it's, and it's a benefit to them because they don't get bogged down in the public hearing process of the sighting council about how no one wants this health tower. Uh, so, but to the point of, you can't just come in and say, "We got to get this done." You don't know what you need yet. You got to figure out, so the best plan is a plan, and then you have to figure out how to execute. Uh, because you may have six or seven different points of reference for antenna towers throughout your community that you have to be established or have to be relocated. So, and that's where, like, uh, Northeastern Communications would come in and, uh, design a system. Uh, and so they're, you know, that's what I've seen other communities do who have suffered similar, uh, concerns.
That's great. Michael, can you, uh, get ahold of the police chief and fire chief and discuss this with them?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Anthony, when's, what time's that meeting on Tuesday?
It's Thursday.
Where is it?
I believe the police station.
This, this, uh, definitely, this needs to be a standalone project, because this has to be accelerated in front of anything, because I understand, well, you may have to move equipment someday from one building to another building, but we need the communication fast, faster. It needs to be accelerated, but, um, you know, taking, um, advice from, from Attorney Marino was heading, heading that way with the carriers. I think that, why reinvent it? Someone's already inventing it for us.
They're going to pay for it, see what...
Is this committee on Tuesday, is this just, uh, the fire and police kind of just getting together on their own, or should we?
It's, it's a posted meeting, a joint meeting.
Should, should we think, as a council, should we think about putting together an actual committee to?
Well, the town has the Emergency Communications Committee.
Okay.
It's made up of two fire commissioners, two police commissioners, two town council members, police chief, fire chief, and the manager. Uh, and maybe this, this committee will lend into that one and make a recommendation and reconvene that committee. And, uh, that's where, that's where the task should report back to the...
Yeah, it's on, that, that's listed as in the committee in, in the paperwork we have.
Can we task them with doing that, or do we?
We have to add some people to that committee, but...
Okay. We, are we good?
Yeah.
Maybe I'd ask that we could put that on the next town council agenda, the Public Safety Committee.
Okay. Uh, fire commission?
Um, yeah, I was just going to bring up the, the radio system again, too. Uh, we covered that. Uh, and the only other thing, just to keep the, uh, council on notice too, is that, and I brought this up last time, is they, they talked about it again, uh, a good majority of the fire apparatus are in need of, um, new tires. Um, and somehow they ended up all on the same schedule. Um, so I'm hoping they put together a plan of maybe a few this year, a few next year, even though there's a, there's a, a national guideline for replacing them every seven years, although I've heard maybe they're ten years too. I'm not a hundred percent sure. Um, but the only other question I had was actually for Fran, because a bunch of the tires that we have, the chief said, are in really good condition. And I, I guess the, you know, the standard was put in place because of, you know, age and dry rot and that kind of thing. Um, and then, you know, again, just, um, just like with the radios, if, if we have, God forbid, you know, a fire truck from Company One's going down Route eighty and hangs a right onto Forest Road and front tire blows and there's an accident, people get hurt, and those tires are older than they should be, you know, does that open us up to any liability because we knew that they were beyond their age? Um, but then the, the question comes up too, is if we do purchase new, uh, new tires, the, and the other ones are in fairly good condition, would they fit any of your vehicles, any of the plow trucks or anything like that?
Yeah, we actually started today, actually, with the fire trucks. So the, uh, well, we have the same issue. We go up the road and we follow the [inaudible] we're in trouble, but, um, not as much as today, but, um, yeah, the tires coming off the back of the trucks, uh, we need to use them. They're everre shaved and anything that's not, we get rid of. It's like trying to get through. So, uh, Spirit has a saving, uh, we can't do the front tires, a little different story, but...
So I didn't hear any, not, just for the council, I didn't hear any numbers on how much it's going to cost the, um, the fire department for all the tires and stuff, but again, just making you aware so that if, if it is brought to our attention and they need money, you're aware of it.
Yeah, I think we have, we have a schedule, but they did the first one.
Okay.
Thank you, Ron. Uh, Board of Education, Town, Town Council Communication Subcommittee.
Um, this, this particular committee has not met, but I've been going, I, I'm one of the liaisons to the Board of Education and go to the budget subcommittee meeting, and sometimes I stay for the board meeting. So I just wanted to update the council on some of the things that have been discussed over the last two or three months with the Board of Education. Um, the first one is the feasibility study on the high school. So QA and M gave a brief presentation at the November Board of Education meeting, and they did not have any numbers per se, but what they presented was three possible sites, new sites for new construction of the high school, and one, which is a renovate as new, which involve new construction in addition to renovating the current high school, joining the two, and then that would be joined to the auditorium. Um, but now, their next step is they now have numbers and they were, they are going to do a presentation to the Board of Education. But I just think because we're both in this together, that that presentation should actually be a joint meeting between the Board of Education and the Town Council. Because from what I saw at the November meeting, there was one site for new construction, possible new construction, that I know that the council would not even consider, because it's, it's right on the new tennis court that we just spent over a half a million dollars on. And personally, I, I couldn't support putting a new high school there. And so why go through all of the cost of estimating what that's going to cost us if it's not even in the running? And, and I think it's a discussion that we should have jointly together with the Board of Ed and the council. Um, so Mike, I would like you to reach out to Scott and also to QA and M to see if we can get a joint meeting, um, for that before it's presented to the Board of Ed. You know, like, there's no present, the next presentation is a joint meeting and not just solely to the Board of Education, because I think we need to have this discussion together. And we may have to have it in another, another location, because it would be open to the public. Um, and I don't know that council chambers or the Board of Ed room would be big enough, um, for that. And, and we need to have a very open dialogue and be able to ask questions, both the council and the Board of Ed, um, so that before any decisions or recommendations come forward, we kind of are all on the same page. Um, so, so that is one of the things. So according to the last, to their meeting last week, Scott said that they were presenting at the February meeting. So, um, you can just get in touch to see once how that is going to go. Um, and then also, um, for the new members of the council, just so that you are aware, I know, um, State Rep. Candelora and Senator Cohen had talked about that, you know, what the state is looking at is more, is combining services. And so one of the things that we started earlier is, um, we're doing a feasibility study right now on the possibility of combining and having one finance director for the town and the Board of Education. But that also included not just the finance director, but possibly having a, um, HR person for the town in the Board of Education, and also looking at the financial software, so that both the town and the Board of Education, we would look at the system, and if it's one system, to make sure that it meets the needs on both sides and it talks to each other. Um, and we can, it's much easier, the system is easier to use, more user friendly, and both sides can use it and it's compatible. Um, so that's all part of the feasibility study. Um, it was discussed at the last budget committee meeting, uh, at the Board of Ed last week, is that they are looking into a new finance, a, a new finance system, um, software, which I don't think that they should do independently, because that's all part of the feasibility study that we're doing right now, um, on there. So, um, I talked to the town manager to find out exactly where we're at with this feasibility study, because it kind of went dark as far as the subcommittee is concerned. The last time we heard anything was going on was late October, early November, and haven't had any updates since then.
I thought we were supposed to get a report at the end of January. I think we were told that one time.
Um, yeah, it's now the twenty-first, and we haven't heard anything. So I'm not sure, Mike, if you had a chance to see where that is?
No, but, uh, I, I think Anthony, Anthony forwarded me an email today, uh, probably, I guess from the weekend, not the weekend, but, uh, was it Sunday? Yeah, it was Sunday. Um, just in terms of where they are, uh, in their process, uh, on the Board of Ed side. So they're, they're still there on that side, not, not coming back to us. I think they have everything, uh, that they need from us. I don't know if we have anything outstanding. So I think they're trying to wrap, uh, things up on the, on the Board of Ed side.
Okay, so can you check with Lou Shapiro and just see once, when they're going to be prepared to?
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like we might have a report by the end of next week, if that, if it was supposed to be a report.
That's what we were told originally.
Right. Um, only because it will have an impact on our budget?
Yeah.
And that was the whole timeline and... Only because it will have an impact on our budget, and that was the whole timeline and everything in regards to this project.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him.
And then, the third thing is on, I guess it's purchases, asset, disposal of assets. And part of this came up, because I had asked the question about, on technology, as far as computers, iPads, like what happens, obviously, on the Board of Education side, they have a lot more than we do on the town side. And the superintendent had been talking to Bruce Williams, and they do recycle their hardware for their computers, their monitors, their desktops, that type of thing. But the question came up in regards to whether it has an asset tag or not an asset tag, and a lot of the technology, the computers and the iPads, fall below the threshold of having an actual, an asset tag and the disposal of it, but yet it's purchased with tax dollars and what happens with them. So Anthony, do you, can you just kind of go over how that is?
The process that's in place is the ordinance specifically states that the manager can dictate the disposal of assets. So what happens is if, say, Fran has a truck, he writes a memo to Mike, "I've got truck number 37, it's rusted beyond repair, I recommend we dispose of it, sell it, whatever." Mike has to approve it, sends it to finance, we take it off the asset records, and then whatever Fran chooses, you know, if it's a bid item, if it's just scrap, that's the process that we typically follow, all departments, police department, they have something that they have surplus, they send a memo down to Mike, he approves it, sends it back to the department, sends a copy to us, we take it off the fixed asset records. The item, the issue of whether they are over the dollar threshold really is insignificant, because they're still town assets, as you mentioned. And if they still have value, there's a policy that has to be followed, as far as it spells out in the town chart, in the code of ordinances, that has to be, again, a letter to the town manager, these are the following iPads that are obsolete for our purposes, maybe, but still have a value, we choose to trade them in towards new ones, we trade to, we choose to, I'm not sure whatever else they could do with them, but...
Donate, give them away.
Donate, whatever they wanna do, but the manager has to bless it. And then he gives the list to finance, and even though it's not an asset-tagged item, there's still a dollar value that those are on our books for, in some cases. So there's still the process, regardless of whether they're over the dollar threshold or under the dollar threshold, they're still assets, they still have to follow that process that every department has to follow. A letter to the town manager, these items we're gonna deem obsolete, donate, sell, whatever we're gonna do, trade them in, and then the manager has to bless it.
Okay, so...
That, in the past, the technology, I guess, due to the sheer volume they have on the Board of Ed side, we typically, at the end of every fiscal year, get a listing, you know, we have the following computers that came offline, and we traded in or whatever. So while they don't follow the letter of the law of the ordinance, they do provide a listing typically at the end, when they go to update their fixed asset records, like we do on our side at the end of the year typically, what's the additions, what's the deletions, they send it down to Adita, and she makes the changes at that point. So I guess you could argue that they don't follow the steps, per se, as far as, you know, here's a list, getting the manager's blessing and so on, but they do provide us with a list of items that they get rid of. The problem we have with fixed assets in general in this town is if you pull the fixed asset record, you probably find tables from the high school from 1967 under still. The fixed asset records are terrible condition, and we started doing a manual one in 1992, and we found all the school buildings and did a physical of each classroom. It's a crazy job. I've talked with the council of governments, looking for intern projects that'd be a home run for us. If we can get a couple interns over the summer to go to all the town buildings, count how many tables, count how many chairs, count how many things we have in each classroom, in each town building, and bring our fixed asset records up to date, it would be greatly helpful from that aspect as well. So there's a couple different issues about assets. I mean, there's the, the records are, I wouldn't say pristine in any way, shape, or form, it's just a task that we'd never get to. And then the disposal process, it's spelled out, and there's supposed to be a bid, quite honestly, when you have a, you must follow the bidding process, you put a bid together. We have, on the town side, typically, when we change out our computers, as we're doing in the process now, put a notice in the paper, we have used PCs for sale, a hundred dollars apiece, pick a number, and if you want them, come down and buy them. So nothing is, nothing is given without anybody noticing, nothing is sold to anybody without anybody, it's all spelled out in the public, it's all for public consumption, if they wanna come buy them, buy, you know, a seven-year-old PC. So we kinda follow maybe a different strategy than they do on the Board of Ed side, but there is a spelled-out process, you have to go through some steps to get rid of an asset, regardless of the size, it's big or large, there's a process. I can forward the appropriate section to Bruce. I think he, we're probably more involved with it than anybody up there, as far as the sheer number of items that he deals with.
Yes, yes, 'cause that's who Scott had me talk to in regards to that. Okay.
Okay, next is Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
All right, next we have Planning and Zoning Commission, Proposed Text Amendments.
I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 16. It was a short meeting, nothing unusual, everything seemed to work fairly, fairly smooth, just a couple zoning issues that they were working on, one commercial, one residential, other than that, everything went according to plan.
Thank you. Next is East Shore District Health Department, nothing. Next we have North Bradford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
Our next meeting is on February 12, and as we promised, we will come back after that meeting to the town council with a report about renovate versus new.
Thank you, Mark. Next we have Finance Subcommittee.
There's no meeting.
No meeting. Next we have Blight Subcommittee, no meeting. All right, we'll move into the town manager's report. First, we have an update on fire leases.
Yes, before I get into that, if I could, before I forget, I do have an item, I think you should have a copy at your desk, to amend the agenda, to add item 9G, which would be appropriation transfers.
I'll move to add 9G appropriation transfers.
9G?
9G. Spray it in a folder.
Is it in the folder? Yeah.
Am I seconded?
Who made the motion?
Mike.
Council Duddy, seconded by Council Angeloni. Any discussion? Go call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duddy?
Yes.
Council Fornin?
Yes.
Council Goad?
Yes.
Council Pattenoster?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Yeah, quick, brief update on the fire leases, just to let you know that I'm putting together a meeting for the 28th in the afternoon to try to wrap that up, and I think we're down to just a few items with respect to insurance coverages, so I'm hoping to make progress at that meeting and be able to report out in one of the February meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Next we have an update on Stanley T. Williams roof.
Yeah, also, just a quick update that finally you got the repair, patch job done on Stanley T., hopefully it'll hold this, as long as it can hold, but it's just, again, it's just patch work, and I threw in some pictures there for you. Phil Chody went up to inspect the work after it was done, and everything, you know, looked like you did a fine job in terms of patching it, but again, it's an old roof, it's gonna have to be addressed down the road, you know, three years, five years, maybe less, unknown. I think the estimate we had when we had, when we did TDS, the company gave us a $2 million cost estimate for Stanley T. Williams, so that was a few years ago, so that's what we're dealing with, and I think more likely we'll have rec departments submit, you know, for a capital project, just to put it in the pipeline.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Next is update, Poco Festival Coordinator.
Yeah, on this one, you know, leaving the last meeting, just talking about whether or not, well, the issue we have there in rec is program coordinator position that was elevated to program supervisor, so whether or not we could combine and take a look at combining Poco Festival coordinator position with that, and I've just kind of tried to outline sort of the analysis of looking at those two different positions and skillsets and hours and union work and union position and so forth and hours, and, you know, when we got through it, talked with Sean and his staff up there, and Anthony as well, and looking at, you know, the different cost centers and just kind of put this together. My recommendation, obviously, is that I don't think it's, makes sense to me to try to combine that because of the several factors, and also getting a CDL Class C for that position for the program worker in the senior department. So I think it makes more sense to keep them separate, just so we don't drive up costs with putting the two together, because the hours just shoot it, you know, through the roof, and I'm not sure you'll get a quality job in either position. I think you're just gonna get pulled from one side or the other, you're gonna get into, obviously, Poco is gonna go year-round, but really have a crunch during the summertime, and the senior center is gonna be pulled away. I just think there's a bunch of issues there, so it's not my, not my recommendation.
I guess I don't quite understand how it's broken out on here on the scenario, you have the current scenario and then proposed, but I didn't think Mike's proposal was that we add the festival coordinator to the full-time position, and that's what it looks like on here, that's why I'm confused as to how this reads.
Right, what it says basically in the bottom half of the page is that you're bringing the person to a 35-hour-a-week job, and there's 27 and a half hours they're currently working as their program worker prior to merging, that leaves you roughly the seven and a half hours per week that they get to do Potato Festival. However, in the 14 weeks between the weeks prior and weeks after, that person's working typically full-time on the Potato Festival, in addition to working their full-time, you know, 27 and a half hours of their 35 theoretically as a senior worker, and seven and a half hours per week as a Potato Festival person. Well, the phone rings and they're in the middle of calling bingo, are they a program worker or are they a Potato Festival worker? Are they driving, if they're driving the senior van bus home, but they have to meet somebody to look at the grounds for carnival rides, are they a program worker or are they a Potato Festival person? Again, you have union issues, one's a union job, the other one's a non-union job, then you get to the issue of overtime, if you figure roughly the 14 weeks, again, maybe two months prior, one, you know, a couple weeks after, of full-time, 35 on top of the seven and a half you're allocating, or now you're at overtime, $26 an hour, you're at $39 an hour, so you're occurring $15,000 of overtime wages, and then the FICA would go to the full 7.65 versus currently, and the top part is the sole-scale alternative, which is only 1.45, and there's pension on the bottom, which is no pension on the top, so I think it's cleaner personally to keep the two jobs separate. I think it's a totally kind of separate skillset you're looking for, I think, as Mike had mentioned, you know, you're a program worker, you need somebody with a proper CDL license that is gonna be the senior person, you know, that's gonna drive them around, be there during the day for their programs, and not worry about the Potato Festival, where conversely, you're a Potato Festival person, basically, if you have a person that has some good organizational skills, that's all you typically need, you know, not to belittle the job, but it's basically an organizational process. I think Lou should do, I think Lou would be a great guy to do that. But, you know, I think it's two different, two different species, I think, you know, you need a CDL person who's gonna be the senior person, to work with them all day, be there for lunches, be there to play games, be there to do all the things you do, bus them around and stuff, and a Potato Festival person is totally separate, in my mind. And the numbers kind of work out that, that does show up that it's gonna be costly, against the assumption that they're gonna work 14 weeks of full-time, is that accurate? Well, if you think of the festival weekend alone, they're working, you know, morning to noon, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, or morning to dusk, I should say, those days alone, it's a full, it's a full-time week just about. So, you know, my numbers are maybe even a little bit light, to be honest, to be honest with you, so...
So the proposed scenario, just so I understand this, where it says program worker full-time, that's really program worker slash Potato Fest?
Exactly.
Okay. And then the bottom portion would be the overtime for the Potato Fest?
Exactly, exactly. And the full-time, it kind of says, we're gonna split her life down the middle, we're gonna give her 27 and a half hours one way, seven and a half hours the other way, and, you know, never the two shall meet, which I don't think is practical.
Yeah, and I think, even on the 2603, I think there'd be pushback on saying, okay, you're senior programmer, and also now you got all these other duties as Poco Festival Coordinator, different skillset, maybe we're lucky to land it, keep it at 2603, but I don't see how we heap on all those duties and responsibilities without saying there's gonna be an increase in that rate, position, classification as well.
But that's a wonderful scenario, if you could do that, but how much is it costing us now to have our program director run in the Potato Fest coordinator position? How much is, we can't fill the Potato Fest coordinator position, so guess what? Who's gonna run it? The part-time person, the other full-time person, and then the director in there, too? So what's that salary when you break it out? So if you can't, if you can't, if you can't hire anybody, we already tried to hire Potato Fest, twice, and we haven't got anybody yet. So I mean, you know, we're talking crunch time now, so what are we, just kicking that money over to the director's salary and saying, no, you're gonna run both of them for your director's pay?
Yeah, I think we haven't been, we've been having...
If you can't find, if you can't find a position, and this is what we were going through the last time, if you can't find somebody, let's do some creative financing to see if we can make it work, not, not let's try shooting holes in it, let's try filling the frickin' position. And if you can't fill it, then what do you do?
Yeah, we haven't been able to retain anyone, I'd like to go out in the market, look solely for a Poco Festival coordinator and...
I mean, it's getting, it's starting to get a little late for that.
It is, it is, absolutely.
So I mean, if you guys can't get something, then somebody's gonna have to do something to fund this program, otherwise you're paying twice the money to have a director being the Potato Fest coordinator, and that's not making much sense. So talk about that salary, Anthony, put a director's salary in there.
No, I see you're saying 100%.
If you guys can't do it, let's get creative and do it, let's figure out a way to do it. Otherwise, then put the director's salary in there.
No, I, there's a question.
Okay. That's all I have. I aired my grievances.
Next is, I'm gonna skip five, next is Citizens Statements and Petitions.
Oh, we got D.
I'm sorry, I have a different agenda here. D would be Review and Discussion Recreation Supervisor and Upcoming Salary Survey.
Yeah, just, again, an FYI that Sean is leaving us as well, and further complicates the situation with the respect to the department, and, you know, looking at where that salary is, I think, you know, I've been barking, looking at townwide for all the departments, looking at salary survey, and I'd like to bring that forward as soon as I can finish that up, and take a look at it. I think it's, you know, something long overdue, it hasn't been touched in a long time, and I think it'd help in the market, looking to attract credible candidates to the position. I mean, some of them, in the initial preliminary analysis, that there are about six or seven positions that are way off, anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 off the, off the average salary within the professional field, looking at comparable towns through some of the CCM data that we've been able to look at thus far, but I'd like to get a little bit tighter and taking a look at those numbers and try to put something together to present to you and take a look at. to present to you and take a look at.
When's he leaving, Michael?
Uh, he leaves-
February 7.
February 7.
February what?
7.
So now you just complicated matter even worse. You've got no director now, you've only got one person left to run everything.
Look at me.
I'd like to, Michael, look.
If Mike does it, I'll do it.
There you go.
All right.
Yeah, that's, it'll be tough, but we'll get it done.
Okay. Next, the citizens' statements and petitions and correspondence.
Bill Samisteno, Sunnyside Drive. Reference to what you were talking about in the, talking about the format for the, we'll be talking about later, for the, the whole council meeting. And in reference to the boards and commissions, you're considering maybe just doing one a month as opposed to two. I really think it probably ought to do two. A good example of that would be tonight. So you've had good discussion, a little unusual. The other thing I wanted to mention is about third time too. With the boards and commissions, there's still two or three important commissions out there that I think ought to be video tapes. All the other towns do it because they're very informational, obviously. And the last thing is, I'll talk about the police station. I told the facility on Saturday, it was somewhere about a month and a half ago, just before I left, he mentioned how the building was really built more like a house. Well, that, that really stuck out to me as, I didn't know where he was getting that. But I think I understood Saturday when I went to visit. Obviously, anybody drives by, says, what's wrong? We all know that. But yes, that place is cramped. I won't go into all of it. Pam Johnson has an article that probably coming out in the sound, and she really hits every point there. And there was all, I went with the actual chief and there was three other, two other people with me. The chief took us around. It's a sad situation. It's really sad, it's been, it's gone this far. Can't do something there. Thanks.
Bill, part-time job? Retired? You're out of it?
Cliff Potter from Northford. Being a staunch believer in only talking during public comments, I didn't want to interrupt you as you were talking about the radio situation. Didn't know how community-minded some of our big organizations would be. I mean, you've got Cherry Hill, you've got Trap Rock, you've got the UI, you've got the Regional Water Authority. If you canvassed them, asked them for tower space, they probably already have transmitter huts already built. They already got the facilities, the heat, the air conditioning. For nominal fee, would they be willing to help the town out to put another antenna on one of their towers? I mean, they probably already got these facilities, like 99% of the work is done. It's the building, cable feeds into it, all of that stuff. It's a chance to maybe reach out to them and see if they've been willing to work with you because they probably already did all this work, especially the water company. I'm, I don't know what they've got up at Galloway, but that's a pretty tall area. I don't know if they got any transmitters. No, nothing up there. But, I mean, the UI, didn't they just put something over here on a pole? I mean-
Well, we got antennas on Oshikowskis, I got antennas on Reed Scaff Road.
Yeah.
We got antennas down in North Branford.
Yeah.
So we already got antennas, but it's just, it's getting to fill in the areas.
Yeah, but is there some towers that are already up that you could kind of?
These are towers we're already working on.
Okay.
We got, we got towers throughout the whole town.
But is there anyone in the dead area that you could work off of, maybe with a little?
But it's, it's not that. It's the radio system has to be redesigned.
Right, it's all high frequency.
And everybody, other towns are going to digital, which digital fills in a lot of spots.
Yeah.
You know, we're not at that stage.
Keep it simple. Remember when it was low frequencies you could hear? I mean, it was down in, what, 40 megahertz range?
Yeah, but there's, there's problems with low frequency. We had low frequency. Fire Department was on low frequency for-
337.
Yeah, for years.
Now, I don't know, maybe I'm, I've always heard that there's rumors that the iron ore in Trap Rock is what sucks up a lot of your signal too. Have you heard that?
No, it's, it's, the town's on a horseshoe and there's dips and valleys between it, so.
Yeah.
I mean, you need a signal to fall right off the front of the mountain and hit down below, you know? And it's the same thing at the Ice Valley, you know?
Yeah.
You're down low, you know, and signals can't be forced down like that.
Understood.
So.
Okay, I just know, something to think about.
That's why with the technology coming out nowadays, maybe it's time for a redesign phase in the whole town with a radio engineer.
Now, I know you mentioned the state system. Was that brought up in any detail, what that consists of, what it's, once you're on it, they pick up the tab?
Well, yeah, so, I mean, there's, as with anything, there's pluses and minuses to everything. The only thing we would be on the hook for is the units themselves, whether they're in a vehicle or portable. Again, the estimated cost was about 5,000.
But also, no matter where they are, it's sort of like a cell-
Well, it's, so nothing's 100% because they said, even with that system, we still had blind spots. Like, just for example, they couldn't pick it up in Company Two.
Yeah.
Right on Middletown Ave. So, you know, that was, that was one area with the state system that they had.
Is that the 800-megahertz system?
It's whatever the state system is, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, it sort of follows what, the cell system follow who you are, where you are system, right? So if-
Yeah, so it's, it's a digital system. The, one of the pluses for it is that it penetrates buildings much better than our current system. I mean, nobody, nobody, I don't think anybody's arguing that the current system is garbage and needs to be replaced. The other, the other thing too is, one is VHF, one is UHF. You know, the police and the fire can't talk on the same system right now.
Yeah.
The, the nice part about the, and I'm not trying to sell the state system, just from what I've heard, the nice part about the state system is that the maintenance of the system, it falls on the state. If a portable or another radio goes down, they temporarily loan you that while they fix the other one. They're also under warranty for a certain amount of time as well. But we would be on the hook for any sort of extra towers or repeaters that need to be put up to, you know, better cover our town. We'd be responsible for the cost of those as well. The channels on those radios are pretty much unlimited.
Yeah.
From what I've heard, so, you know, even if like the Police Detective Bureau wanted their own channel or whatever, they could, they throw that in if, if, you know, whatever, they, you could just call them and they'll put another channel on for you. It's a statewide, the range is statewide, which is obviously a positive. And I think the example I gave last time, just from being on the ambulance, when I was on the ambulance, is the closest burn center is Bridgeport, right? We wouldn't, currently, we lose communication along the way. We'd have communication all the way to Bridgeport Hospital.
Right.
Or Hartford Hospital if, if, you know, Yale was on it, was diverted. So there's, there's definitely a lot of benefits to that system. And there's also other towns going on that system as well. Not all of them, North Haven just did one over in there on their own system. So, you know, there's pluses and minuses of everything, but that's why I think that committee, if we could get that committee on it and they could start looking at all these great suggestions, you know, whether it's the, the state system or whether we reach out to, you know, the cellphone companies and see what they, you know, what they're willing to do and, you know, or like Mike said, bring in an expert and having him kind of look at everything and make a recommendation for us. Because maybe, even though the state system sounds good, maybe there's another system out there that would suit the specific needs of North Branford better with all the dips and valleys and stuff like that.
Well, definitely have an issue with those adjustments a year or so over the decades. Wouldn't that antenna all shot or something?
There's a difference up there now.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right. The other thing I want to say is, I am hardcore volunteer at the Poco Fest. And what we lack is continuity. And guess what you lose when you don't have continuity? You lose volunteers. We've lost some very good volunteers. We're down to the point where it's, when we have a meeting, you could almost meet around one table. We've got to get somebody in there that is going to stay, have some continuity. And you can't depend on the director having to watch it. It's, it's not, and I don't want the job, Mike, don't even. They, it's just that continuity has got to happen, no matter, we've gone through so many directors, all sorts of different personality conflicts, from Tilly to Hunt to the sweetest person in the world. We've got all sorts of stuff that goes on there. We get through it. It's always a success. And, but it's getting to the point where we're just going to, the more messed up it gets, the harder it is to put on. It will still always happen. It's a great town event. And I've always said, as long as it's not a cash cow and it's a town event, I'll be there doing what I do. But it's just a good time for the town. It makes our town look good. A lot of people look forward to it. I've got friends that were in the National Guard with me from Middletown. They said, hey, it's the Potato Fest, it's going. Yeah, it's still happening. So it's a, always the first weekend, first full weekend in August, people know that. So we've got to keep it running somehow, but we've got to keep somebody in there too because to reinvent the wheel every year, people don't like change. And we're, we're having a hard time, we've lost volunteers, we can't get them to come back. We've, I guess there's letters been sent out. So kind of got to work on this, to work through this, to keep this working in the future. And, but it, you know, it can't be always looked at with the dollar value. It's a good time for the town, it brings the town together. And it's not that we, you know, we just don't get down this way as much as we should and they don't come up our way as much. But during Potato Fest weekend, everybody in town gets to see everybody and everybody has a good time. And it's well laid out, the car show's always a big hit, all this stuff that happens. So we just got to, you guys have got to come up with some kind of plan to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment, you know, mine. As a citizen, in accordance with the section 10-4 of the charter of the town of North Branford, I hereby disclose to the town council that I have a financial interest that requires disclosure about my virtue of employment with the North Branford Parks and Recreation Department. I hereby request that town council record this disclosure upon the official record of its community.
Thank you. Shelley, you got that?
Thank you.
It's Bill Samisteno. In reference to the festival coordinator, I know, you know, with Gail, that she was looking for some big bucks, but since then, you've already updated the salary. Maybe it could be a possibility that you could work a deal, at least for this year. You're running pretty late, you probably realize that already, and you don't know what you're going to get. At least with Gail, if you bow down a little bit and get a little here.
Well, unfortunately, she did not accept the offer.
Yeah, but maybe she would accept something in between.
It was already offered to her.
What?
No, he says go higher in salary.
We, we did, based on this year's, they did, and, and she did not accept it.
Yeah, okay, well, just, I don't know, I wasn't privy to all that. But personally, and the reason I say is just, and she only came on, but ready in June, Jennifer set her up pretty good. And I think she did a good job for three months, everything went pretty smooth. Anyway, just speaking of, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Next is resignation, resignations and appointments. First one is appointment of Kim Dawson, the Economic Development Commission replacing Joan Tudor. Term to expire 12/31/2022.
Second.
Councilor Angeloni. Mike?
Yep.
Seconded by Councilor Duty. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia.
Yes.
Next is appointment of Mark Lilly to the Housing Authority, term to expire 6/30/2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by, by Councilor Angeloni and seconded by Councilor Duty. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Dawn Pearson to the Board of Assessment Appeals, term to expire 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni and seconded by Councilor Duty. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Shirley Gagnit to the Housing Authority, term to expire 6/30/2022.
Second.
Councilor Angeloni. Motion seconded by Councilor Duty. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Steve Torino to the Parks, Park and Recreation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2022.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Duty. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Alex DeFrancisco, planning a zoning commission, term to expire 5/31/2021.
So moved with just a correction, he is not a Republican. According to the list we just got from Lisa Valenti, he is currently on that board and he's unaffiliated, so that should be a U.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni. Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Deborah Ferraro to the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire 12/31/2020.
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Angeloni and seconded by Councilor Duty. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duty.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Goode.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Thomas Scalfo to the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee, term to expire 12/31/2021.
Second.
Councilor Angeloni. Seconded by Councilor Duty. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Godd.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Pollicia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Thomas Caton to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Epstein.
Councilor Godd.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Pollicia.
Yes.
Next is reappointment of Peter Deo as an alternate to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Duddy. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Godd.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Pollicia.
Yes.
I just have one, Mike, can you just, on the list that we had at our desks prepared by Lisa, she still has the police commission person, Richard Simmons, but we did that at our last meeting. And this list came out after. So can you just check that? And then the other one on this list that we need to take off, unfortunately, is Dudley Harrison, who recently passed away. So if his name can speak, he's an alternate on the commission, but.
Hey, I'll see her tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Next is unfinished business, discussion and action, future budget planning initiative.
Uh, no, I have no items.
Okay. Update, next is update on nine forty-four Totoket Road remediation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm having your agenda, a series of documents included. Just to go over with you, a copy of what is recorded on the land records. There's a document entitled Plaintiff's Motion to Terminate Stay dated December nineteen, two thousand and fourteen. And there's a document. Might be a better word. I believe it says Order Ray one oh nine, which is basically the court changing its, formatting its order for purposes of recordation on the land records. These are the two documents that would be released in order to allow the property owner to have marketable title. And the town engineer has confirmed that the work has been substantially completed, with the exception of certain construction equipment that needs to be removed and the unknown variable of, and it's only because of the time of year, whether or not the seed that was spread will actually germinate and grow. So in order to accommodate the property owner, and after discussion with Mr. Potter, who was a complainant of the issue, what we agreed to was that through a side letter agreement, that, and that is also before you, that we could proceed because, with releasing the liens, because the work is substantially completed, as confirmed by the town engineer, and that the side letter agreement, which is a three-page document, which is on my firm's letterhead, just captures the two remaining items. Number one is that all construction vehicles and/or construction equipment located at nine forty-four Totoket Road in Northford shall be removed from the property owner for the twentieth of two thousand and twenty. And that is something that will be easily verifiable. And then item two is that in the event that the seed that has been spread on the property does not germinate and grow, as anticipated, the property owner will agree to reseed the property. And it'll be the town engineer's sole discretion to determine whether or not additional seeding is necessary. Just to ensure that the property owner has some due process, since this is not an appealable action, I did set up a process that if the town engineer, at least as believed by the property owner, is acting unreasonably, because in his opinion that it has germinated and is growing, that I set up an appeal to this body. So basically what the property owner would do is, after receiving written notice from the town engineer that he has to reseed, if the property owner objects, he would have five calendar days to seek an appeal to this body. This would then be placed on your agenda at the next meeting. And then the property owner would be able to explain to you why such additional seeding is not necessary. The town engineer would be able to explain why he made his decision. And you would be the ultimate authority on whether or not additional seed is necessary. I specifically laid out a timeline. And if the property owner does not avail himself of it or misses it by a minute, then he doesn't have any appeal rights. And this will not be appealable to the Superior Court. And then I just put in some miscellaneous language, to the extent that the town has to enforce this agreement because of a failure on the part of the property owner, that the town will be able to recover, among other things, its reasonable attorney fees and costs in pursuit of any judicial action. So I believe that the side letter agreement protects the interests of the town for the two remaining items that are not material to the work that needed to be done. And with that, what we'd be looking for is adoption of the resolution that is included in your packets, authorizing me to sign the Satisfaction of Judgment and Release of Judgment liens, which is a copy of that is also in your packets, which will be recorded on the North Branford land records, releasing the two documents I previously identified, and authorizing me to enter into the side letter agreement with the property owner, as just outlined. Just for, just for the minutes, the property owner did sign the side letter agreement, but right above my signature line, emboldened letters, I put that the agreement was subject to this body's approval. So if it is the will of the body, I would ask for an adoption of the resolution, or if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So what happens if he doesn't remove all that equipment?
If he does not remove all the equipment, then we can bring an action for, basically it would be a breach of the side letter agreement. And then we would seek judicial intervention to compel the removal. And then seek, as additional damages, any attorney's fees and costs incurred as a result of that action.
Why is it so important to release this lien now that's been there for five or more years?
I think it's been there for almost twenty.
Yeah.
I believe there's a new property owner, and I believe he's trying to refinance his property.
So we're accommodating him and refinancing?
We're, it's an accommodation to the property owner, following what's been determined as substantial completion of the work. And going forward, once, you know, and Kurt and I had discussed this, if he takes the equipment off, Kurt's gonna go out and verify the equipment's gone. If the equipment comes back the next day, that's unrelated to this act, to this, that's now a potential zoning violation. And then the zoning department will have to pursue it under the zoning regulations. Once we've verified that the equipment is gone, then it's, you know, he has satisfied his obligations. And as any other property owner, he has to remain compliant with our zoning regulations. So.
So why don't we wait until the equipment's off?
If that is your, if that is your desire, you can table this until the equipment is off and the seed germinates. That's, it's, you know, it's your decision. We felt, and after consultation with Mr. Potter, that in order to accommodate the property owner, because he did inherit this issue and he was finally getting a job done that hadn't gotten done for decades, that we were satisfied and Cliff was satisfied that, you know, that he was acting in good faith and that we should return that income.
He did something in months, and Cliff could verify, he did something in months that took us twenty-plus years to get done.
Yeah.
You know, and I feel, you know, we should help.
In fairness, they went through that personal tragedy. And compensate for that lost time, they were working sunrise to sunset, trying to catch up. It's actually working, even though it's draining. Not quick, but at least it's draining and it's, you can see it because you get the ice line, and then you'll notice it's dropped. So the fix is working. That's the most important part. And, I mean, they did work hard. Chucky, Charles, he's always been good to you guys. I mean, you, I'm not in, you guys deal with Chucky. And he's come through. And I think to do it this way, you still have a legal binding way. But I think he needs some financing, if I'm, I don't want to go into too much. So with a lien against the property, I don't think he can finance it. And without financing it, he might be going into a financial hardship. I mean, I can't live another twenty years. I mean, it's, I'm seventy-two. This started when I was, what, thirty, forty-two? I can't do the math. But anyway, he's done more in the last year than got done properly for many, many years. So he, I am satisfied. The fix, they came up.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of authorizing town managers to sign the satisfactory and judgment. Yeah, town attorney, to sign the satisfactory judgment and the satisfactory judgment and release of judgment liens.
It's on page thirty-four in our tablet, in our.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Motion made by Councilor Duddy, seconded by Councilor Fawnen.
I was just gonna say, just for completeness, because I think I heard, I heard it this way, that it was a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Right.
Yes.
Because there's also, it's authorizing the signing of the recordable document, as well as the side letter agreement, which is the binding legal document to make sure those extra things get done.
That was exactly what he said.
That's what I had heard, I thought. I just wanted to make sure the minutes reflect that.
So I put Councilor Duddy moved, seconded by Councilor Fawnen, to adopt the resolution as presented by Town Attorney Myrana regarding nine forty-four Totoket Road, Northford.
We reviewed the video and that's what he said.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Viglione.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Duddy.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen.
Yes.
Councilor Godd.
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster.
Yes.
Councilor Pollicia.
Yes.
Bless you, Cliff. We won't see nine forty-four Totoket Road on there anymore.
All right, next is new business discussion and action. Okay, next is, I'm sorry, town council agenda format.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was asked to put together a sketch of what a revision to your agenda may look like to help maybe at least, at least one meeting a month, speed the meeting along.
Okay.
And one of the ways to accomplish that could be through the use of the consent agenda. A consent agenda is a, is a tool that can be used under Robert's rules where there's no controversy or discussion or dispute over a matter. So it could be, for example, like all of your appointments. It could be your approval of your minutes. It could be the approval of your tax refunds. Those were the things that came to my mind when I was reviewing your agendas from the past. This could be done at every meeting. So if you're looking at page one of the proposed revised agenda, regardless of whether it's meeting first, which has your WPCA joined with your town council, or just your meeting two, your consent agenda can be used on every agenda to speed up that portion of the program. Now, what you would do, for example, is so on your consent agenda, if you had your minutes, your confirmations, now also, I changed it, you have it as appointments. Under your charter, you actually don't appoint, you confirm the appointments of the town manager. So just to flow the vernacular, to conform to the charter, you're, he's appointing, you're confirming. Kind of like the president with the judicial, with the Senate. So it's confirmations. Resignations, it's more of an FYI, so, because you're not taking action on resignations. So it's there, but it's a good place for you to know what's going on, so that's a good place for it to be. And then the tax refunds. So all you would do is, if there's no objection to anything in those items, it would be one motion and you're done. And then you move on to, it would then move on to item next, minus misnumbered. But if there's, if anyone objects, so for example, maybe within the confirmations, there's gonna be objection where someone says, well, item three B three, I don't, I don't agree to John Smith being appointed to this board. Then there's gotta be, if it's on the consent agenda, it has to be removed from the consent agenda. So you would have to make a motion to remove it from the consent agenda. It would then fall down on a new business and be dealt with separately. Okay?
Same thing.
So you can do it that way. And then again, if there, if there's objection, you just make, like you would make a motion to add to the agenda, something, you just simply make a motion to remove from the consent agenda. And then it falls down a new business.
It automatically, or do you have to make another motion?
No, it automatically falls a new business.
Okay.
Okay?
And what about the minutes? If there's a correction to the minutes, does that automatically fall?
As a matter of pure process, answer is yes. As a matter of, you know, we do have to operate in reality and sometimes it could be typographical errors and whatnot. Short answer is, yes, it should fall down when there are additions like, like tonight. But, I mean, if there's a double the, or something that we can deal with simply, you know, maybe we can just address that on the, you know, can you make that change? Because it's a Scribner's error. It's not a, you know. But if it's a substantive error, you know, like there's no, no one made a motion, so that has to be tabled. You would remove it, put it on a new business, and then table it. Okay? And then your reports of your committee boards and commissions would be your second meeting only. So it would not be on your WPCA night. It would only be your second night. The Blight Subcommittee, they've concluded there were. They're just waiting to see if there's comment from the building official and then it will come back on the floor. So that should probably be disbanded and removed from the calendar. You know, your town managers report will be what it will be, community events and presentations, citizen statements, unfinished business. I will say, I'm all for transparency and public participation. You're one of the few councils that allow, you allow a lot of public participation, which is not a bad thing. But what I did is, I moved it to the front, so it's roll call, public participation. If you're going to allow the public to speak on an agenda item, I don't know if you need to have public participation at the beginning and public participation at the end. That's up to you, whether or not you want to have that much public participation. Because under your rules, the public's allowed to speak. And this is when we get to the rules, which I was not, I did not revise, because I wanted to see what your position was of this. Under your rules, you afford the public five minutes per speaker. That's a lot of time. You know, if you have ten people that want to speak, it could be an hour's worth of public participation. Most boards and commissions will limit public participation to two minutes. So that's something for you. You could always extend it. But once you've afforded five minutes, you know, five minutes tends to be seven. So, and it's also, it is a lot of time. So it's something, so the only, I left it here because this is historically how you've done it. done it, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. That's a second time that you're allowing the public to come up to address you. You know, why is there a need for the public to come up? They've addressed you at the beginning. So what I've seen other communities do is say, public participation is for any item, any, any matter that the public would like us to know about that is not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, then you'll be afforded the time to participate, you know, and what you, what you would do is, you would speak amongst yourselves, and then you would say, is there anyone from the public that would like to, to address us on this matter? That's your call. There's no obligation to do that. But what you're doing oftentimes is, they're coming up, the public's coming up at the end of your meeting and talking about something that you've already done, maybe you've already voted on. Well, you know, no, we don't want to be disrespectful to the public, but, you know, they're saying, they're talking about something that you've already acted on. So, you know, it's almost like, why? What's the purpose at this point? You're not gonna be reconsidering your actions because you just voted.
Ben, why, why would you have, at the beginning of the meeting, why would you have, open it up to people, to citizens for things that are not on the agenda, rather than say for things that are on the agenda?
Right, well, because it's an opportunity for the public to come down and speak to their town leaders. I have a problem, I've been complaining about a pothole on my street for the last six months, and nothing's gotten done. You know, I'm really concerned about X, Y, and Z. You know, so it's just an opportunity, you're giving an opportunity to the public to come forward and address you, but if it's on your agenda, you know, then you have to ask yourself, do you want them to have to address you then, or while you're in the conversation of that moment? Because, you know, I, I often say, how do you remember? You're, you're going through twenty-five or thirty action items, you know, appointments, various topics, and is your mind going to recall with specificity what the public is saying if it's said at the very beginning of the meeting? You know, you may not get to that, that agenda item for forty-five minutes or an hour and a half. And, you know, so, in fairness to the public, if, again, you've got to remember, this is a public meeting, it's not a public hearing. There is no obligation under the law to allow the public to speak at a public meeting. I think it's good form, but there's no obligation. So if you're gonna allow it, do you want it so it's primary in your mind when you're deciding how you're gonna vote? Or is it just gonna be formulaic, where, you know, we're gonna have public participation at the beginning and public participation at the end because we want to be transparent and have participation of the public? How is that true participation? You know, so I would either, I would rather personally, particularly because, you know, oftentimes it's nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, and we have very active public speakers who come up and address us routinely, and there's no, no problem with that. Sometimes at ten o'clock at night, you know, are you really listening? Because everyone's saying, who's, who's gonna trample over who to get to their car? Right? If they address you at the beginning on things not on the agenda, and then you open it up and allow them to come up if they want, when the agenda item is called, then I would say you would get rid of the public participation at the end. Because if they want to address it, they should, they have the opportunity at the beginning. Okay? And if, and if someone's late, and they, you know, they could always say, I'm sorry I didn't get here on time, and you could, you know, you could, you could always extend them the flexibility of addressing you anytime on your agenda. So I left citizen statements as, as an agenda item toward the end of your, your, your new formatted agenda, but that's something that I would consider striking. And then you have unfinished business, new business, executive session, these are, these are matters if there are matters. If there's no new business, then there's nothing there. There's no executive session, then it's not listed. So that is basically, you know, in my research, the consent agenda generally saves between twenty and thirty minutes in a meeting. I mean, you just saw the, you know, kind of the, the exercise we went through with all the appointments, you know, and it was all unanimous, and it was all by roll call. So we, we did discuss last time going to the, doing a roll call only when it is either requested by any council member, or where it's a matter of maybe public concern. So for example, a consent agenda, it could all be, all those in favor, I, those opposed, nay. You know, if you're concerned about recording everyone's vote, well, if it's unanimous, you're all, everyone present presumably voted for it. So, you know, the, again, the ritual of the roll call is somewhat lost if it's unanimous. And if it's, if, if it's five in favor and four opposed, well, the minutes are gonna record who voted in favor and who voted against. So it's, you can, you, you can use the roll call only where, only in situations where it's not unanimous. So if it's not unanimous, then we go to roll call. Or if it's a matter of a concern to any one of you, and you raise your hand and object to having a vote by anything other than a roll call, then you could have in your rule that it must be by a roll call.
But if someone had missed the previous meeting, then you really do have to have a roll call, right? Because first, it can't be unanimous. Like, say, you know.
Well, you could abstain, right? So if, if you abstained, so you could, it would be, I, I'm a.
So tonight on Peter DeMeo, when Joe abstained, it would have been.
It would have been, it would have been, we have a full complement here, right? So it would have been eight in favor, no one against.
So if everybody says in favor.
So all in favor, I, all opposed, no one speaks, and any abstentions.
Okay, so you have to ask those three questions.
It would be, all those in favor, all those opposed, any abstentions. I mean, it's still formulaic, it's just truncated.
Would the mayor have to say at that point, let the record show, all council members were in favor except for one councilman, name the councilman that abstained?
Well, it would be.
Would it even have to do that?
No, you're gonna, gonna have all in favor, you know, anybody opposed, and any abstentions, and the person that abstained, the clerk would take down his name.
Right, so, so in that situation, if the mayor says, it's unanimous with one abstention, because there's no objection. If it's, you know, if it's eight-one, you know, it's, again, it's still, the record is capturing the vote, right? Because the minutes are gonna say who, who voted I and who voted nay. It's just, you're not doing nine appointments where it's motion, so moved, roll call, so moved, roll call, so moved, roll call. So I, you know, that was probably a fifteen-minute exercise. So, so it's really the, so the consent agenda, I don't think any items other than these would probably be appropriate for your format. And the only other thing that you could do to speed up is the way you conduct your voting. Other than that, it really depends on what you're, you know, how you're gonna take your reports of your committees. Because, you know, you had a very healthy conversation about cell towers and, but these are supposed to be reports, right? So the public does, you know, you're reporting what went on at that subcommittee, and you parlayed that into a conversation about maybe planning or things that we should be doing, which is healthy, but it's really, I would probably rather, Sarah, this is what we did, I'd rather on the next agenda, under new business, I want this item on so we can discuss it. Because the public didn't know that you were gonna be talking about public safety, emergency equipment. Right? So you engaged in a substantive conversation, but you really didn't give the public at large notice that you were gonna be doing that. Now, it came in under your report of that sub, of that subcommittee. So, you know, it wasn't necessarily inappropriate, but to be fair to the public, they, someone may want to come down and address you on it, and now they don't have that opportunity. So what I'd rather say is, you know, I went to the subcommittee, this is my report, I have the following concern. On our next agenda, I would like to see this on a new business. So, you know, again, it may, it may sound like it's a lot of lifting, but if you're trying to afford the public the opportunity to be aware of what you're doing and to have proper process, I think that would be a more appropriate way. And then your reports are really just reports, they're not conversation. Your conversations should be, and your deliberations should be about action items. Right? So we have to plan, that's an action item. Why are we planning? Well, because of something I discovered when I was at the police subcommittee, or at the fire subcommittee, or at planning and zoning, or, you know, and again, we, we went through a lot of process about roles and responsibilities. We also have to remember, what is our role as town council? And, you know, just because planning and zoning, maybe doing something with the P O C D, doesn't necessarily mean you have the right to interfere with what they're doing. Because that's their jurisdiction, not your jurisdiction. So you gotta be sensitive to what is your jurisdiction, what is your authority? And, you know, so, but under, so under the reports, that's all you're doing, is getting an update of what's going on at that, at that level. So, other than that, so your, and I didn't prepare two, two separate agendas, your first meeting would be your WPCA meeting, would omit your, your subcommittee reports, your second meeting without your WPCA would, would simply have it, but you would have a consent agenda on every, every meeting. And, you know, and what, what I would do is, I would, what you could do is you could, through the town manager and the mayor, if an issue like this came up that you were very passionate about, ask it to be put under, put it on the agenda for discussion purposes. That would be a better way of bringing it to the floor for proper conversation and deliberation.
Under new business?
Under new business, great.
Yeah, Ben, it's not, it's not supposed to, from what I read, it's not supposed to get personal, political. Just, just bring back from the meetings what, what was talked about.
Yes.
And don't make any decisions on anything. Is that right? Am I saying that right?
Well, it's a report. It's a, this is what is going on at the police commission, this is what's going on at Park and Rec, this is what's going on. So it's, that's all it's supposed to be, is a report. Your liaison or, you know, they have concerns about X, they have concerns about Y. Well, is there anything we can do about that?
Which is good, the conversation was great. I really appreciate it.
Right. But if there's, it's, is there anything we can do about that? Well, yeah, maybe what we can do is we can add something to our next agenda and have a conversation about it. You know? Or why don't you go back to the subcommittee, why don't you go back as the liaison and ask them if there's anything they want us to consider? Instead of, again, assuming that, I don't know, I'm gonna kind of make up a, you know, since we don't, it looks like we're not gonna have a Poco Festival coordinator tomorrow, you know, it's, whose responsibility is that? Is that Park and Rec's, or is that yours? You know? Do you really want to take on a responsibility that's not absolutely yours if you delegated it to them? You know? Make it their problem, and tell them they have to figure it out. By you talking about it, if it's not your responsibility any longer, you're assuming and taking it back. And so you're creating work for you, which may ultimately create conflict with the subcommittee. Not that it's conflict as a matter of law, but it's conflict as a matter of personality. Because, you know, you've given to a subcommittee a charge to do something, through your liaison, you're now talking about it, and then you're maybe offending personalities on a subcommittee, saying, why are they talking about this? Why aren't they? So, you know, use your liaisons for better communication with your subcommittees, which is really what, what the liaison is supposed to be, right? Is the communication line between this council and with that subcommittee. So, you know, those, just some things, and, you know, if you tweak your format just a little bit, you could probably, you know, save on average fifteen to twenty minutes of time. My research showed about thirty minutes in general. So, but it's, again, this is your meeting, you have to decide how you want to format your agenda, this is just a suggestion. And once you've decided how you want to do it, then what I would next do is bring back your rules, and we would need to amend your rules to incorporate the agenda format. And then I would want to point out a couple of other things, like do you want to leave public participation to five minutes? Do you want to lower it to two minutes? Again, you could always give more, but you can't take back. Once it's set at five, it's five. And a five, you know, five can become ten. And if you have a controversial matter, and you have a room filled with people, and they're all allowed five minutes, you know, twenty people at five minutes, you know, I was told there'd be no math, but that's a lot of time. Right? So something to consider. Anyway, does anyone have any questions, or does anyone want to make any suggestions further? Or you can think about it, again, there's no rush to get this done.
I'd like to sleep on it.
Yeah, me too.
That is fine. I will, what I'll do is, I'm not gonna be at your next meeting in February, only, but I'll be at the, one in, the second meeting in February. I'll have your rules in your packet. So maybe what you can do is review the rules, and then maybe by the second meeting in February, we can come to a decision on your meeting format, and then modify your rules.
Do we have to go into the charter for any of this?
No, not the charter. You, you have rules and policies that would just have to be amended. And it's just, just through action of this body.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
When you said the consent agenda, that means all those items, just one, yea and nay, that's it?
That's it.
For all those?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
The whole, the whole section.
Yep. So if you, it's really, it's, it's like one big brush. You know, because, again, it's only supposed to be things that are, there's no contest, there's no objection, and it's one action. Motion to approve consent agenda, second vote, you, you've just gotten rid of potentially fifteen to twenty agenda items in one action. I mean, just tonight, you had A through J, that would have been one action. You would have had the tax, tax refunds and the minutes, so that's two, four, six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve.
The minutes would have gotten removed.
Uh, the minutes would have gotten removed, right? But that would have been twelve, twelve action items would have been one, even without the minutes. So something to consider.
But if anybody wants to abstain from any of those things, then you have to take it off that consent agenda.
You know, when I, all my research only showed if there's objection. It actually never, an abstention is not an objection. So I, I will.
But I mean, if somebody missed the meet, the current meeting, how can they vote yes on the agenda? I mean, on the minutes.
Well, the minute, you're right.
Pardon? Yeah, but then, then it has to come off the.
That's what he's saying.
What I'm saying is, I'll research that, I did not see abstention, an abstention is not an objection. Saying, I wasn't here, so I can't vote I. But it's still unanimous, right? And it's, because it's no objection. It's just unanimous of eight instead of unanimous of nine. So, but I will verify that, but I don't see why an abstention would affect that as a matter of process. But, anyway, and, but give some thought to the consent agenda, things that you would say, now, maybe we want to leave the minutes off?
I said one thing, I think on that three B, the council's not confirming managers' appointments, those are political party appointments, so it's not, you're looking at the employment of personnel at the council.
Well, but, right, that's, but that, that's gotta come in under, under a confirmation, so we can call confirmation slash appointments. I, I got you. Okay. Thank you for that.
All right, we'll move into new business discussion in action. Review and approval of workplace violence policies.
Yeah, there's a two-page draft.
Yeah, there's a two-page draft in the, in the packet. Hoping to get this added to the last policy from the last meeting on sexual harassment. So tonight we have workplace violence and then the next item is affirmative action E E O policy.
I make a motion to approve workplace violence policy as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Angeloni. Second by Councilor Diamond. Discussion?
Mike, is this new or is this a revision?
Revision, yeah. Courtney George from Ben's office reviewed.
Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goad?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia?
Yes.
All right, next is review and approval of A A E E O policy.
I make a motion to approve the A A E E O policy as presented.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Duty. Discussion?
I just want to, the initials stand for affirmative action and equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity, just in case anyone was wondering.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goad?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia?
Yes.
Next is COG, resolution.
Yeah, so there's a packet of information in your, in your packet from the Council of Governments. They're seeking the council's support and endorsement for two items, two grants that are coming through the Regional Performance Incentive Program. One for cybersecurity and the other for school waste diversion pilot program. So it will not cost the town anything. It's being processed through the Council of Governments. But they need it for the February 28 deadline.
Okay, so as I read through them, the school waste diversion pilot program, since that really has to do with the school system, have you talked to anyone at the school system? Because there's a lot to that that they would have to do and I would just hate to approve something that they don't know anything about.
Yeah, I've sent over, but I haven't heard back from Scott. I've sent him the package and notification, but have not heard back from him. But you're right, there is, there is participation that's expected of each of the municipalities. At least, I think the expectation is one school to participate and to do that.
Right, and I, I don't know, I'm just a little theory of saying-
I'll table it. I'll make a motion to table it until we hear back from the school. Michael, maybe you could touch base or send a letter to Scott.
Yeah, and we still have time. We can just recycle, bring it back for the-
February, the first meeting in February. Just, we're under a time constraint. Because they do have some, if the board has to vote on anything or discuss it, they do have some budget workshops coming up and they can always amend their agenda beforehand because they are special meetings. But if this is something they feel that they want to, I just think they should be notified of it.
Right. Okay, no problem.
Do we need a second on that?
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Can we table any discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goad?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia?
Yes. Next is Substanzable Connecticut Resolution.
Right, so your program I mentioned at the last meeting, they're also looking for a resolution for participation that has to go and be approved by the state and no cost there either. We just have to name or put together a team. And as I mentioned, there are at least four to five individuals that are willing to serve or interested in serving and deforming that. And Roger Salway has agreed to be the point person for the town in terms of shepherding this process through.
So we don't have to name the people in this resolution?
No, I've named, in the resolution, naming Roger Salway to serve as our contact person. But other than that, no. But within 90 days, we have to form a committee and put a committee together.
I'll move, that's the town of North Branford Resolution supporting participation in the substantial Connecticut municipality certification program. Be adopted, as submitted.
Wait a second. Motion made, motion made by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goad?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia?
Yes.
Next is financial report, December 31, 2019.
Mr. Mayor, one quick comment on that last motion, the third whereas, I believe North Branford needs to be substituted in there.
I'm sorry.
On that last motion, the third bullet down, the third whereas.
Yeah, it says municipality.
Yeah, you've got to plug North Branford in there. Financial report remains unremarkable. Top line, tax collections slightly ahead of last year. 52.5, 62.2 last year. Revenue was almost identical, 55.1%, 55.5 insignificant. No departments are over expended. Still on track. The report remains unremarkable. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
How's the report?
Unremarkable.
Thank you, Anthony. Next is approval of tax refunds.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goad?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia?
Yes.
Next, we have appropriations transfers.
I move that transfer from account 101, 4125, 319 for $1,050 to 4125, 401.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Big Leone?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnen?
Yes.
Councilor Goad?
Yes.
Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
Councilor Paliccia?
Yes.
All right, next we have citizen statements and petitions.
Maybe for the last time. You've always been an open council. I think that success to town council's success is the fact that you've been willing to listen to us. I learned when I was in the service, mid-level N C O, you wanted feedback when you asked something of your people. If you just threw it out there and you got nothing, you didn't know if it was successful or not. You only meet twice a month. We are starving in this town for news. The neighborhood register only puts our bad news in. They don't ever, Megan, whoever she was, was coming. Pam Johnson's not here. Sometimes the news we get as you deal with town council business. We hear it for the first time. And I always respect when I can speak. I try not to overload you with information, but I have, as you develop policies and procedures, maybe the public has an idea that might help you develop those policies and procedures. If you put them off to the following month, it may do no good. They may not come back up or you just keep kicking the can down the road. I'll, you know, we'll respect whatever you do decide, but I think that you've been successful because we've had input and we hear everything you say. So, meeting only twice a month, you know, it's good that we handle business well. But I think sometimes the public needs to be heard from. Thanks.
Thank you. Any motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.